Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. This is our regular meeting of May 24th, 2022. And if you would join me with the Pledge of Allegiance, we will commence the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think we've all signed the orders except Joe. Is Joe on? Good evening, Joe.
Good evening.
The first order of business will be the approval of the minutes of May 10th. We have those in front of you.
Move to accept.
Motion's made by Sharon to accept, seconded by Mary. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes of May 10th? Hearing none, all those in favor of adoption of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, minutes are approved. While we're signing these, does anyone have any announcements? Anyone on the board?
Just the reminder we all got that the circle publication deadline or the deadline to submit articles is June 1st for department heads and a reminder that we hold our comments to 300 words. This is the last circle before the fall. So if you've got summer events or anything that you want to note for the summer, please make sure it gets in this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Kurt, no? Joe?
All set.
Yeah, the only announcement I have is that we, we, Mary and I had a very, very, very pleasant presentation by our Rutland Town School Orchestra. Outstanding. Just, it really is incredible how talented they are and
And they played all these for us.
They played some of these, including, including a Beatles song. We were, of course, Mary and I were there tapping it out. Some of the kids were wondering Beatles.
And we knew the words too. I don't know, I was
Well, I knew some of them, but anyway. And they played a, they played one of the theme songs from, from James Bond as well. I think it was Live Free or Die, but I'm not sure of that one either.
Well, you really are old.
Yeah, I don't care. I don't deny that. Since wisdom comes sometimes. We're really lauding it up over you, Kurt. Sitting there thinking Beatles, what is this?
Oh, I know, I know Beatles.
No, it was, it was very nice.
They're on trees and bushes, right?
No, the seniors were there. It was well attended and it was a wonderful meal and Rutland Town School continues to be the apple of my eye anyway. I mean, it just gives me a lot of pride to see the pride that they take in that school and the system and the building is immaculate. Lot of care. It shows how much they love that. Their school, their school. So in any case, is there any member of the public that is not on the agenda that would like to address the board this evening?
Yes, Don. Don.
Yes, is it Byron?
Yeah.
Or I can't read this from this distance.
Well, anyways, well, anyways, I was wondering, I was wondering if the highway crew could stop at the cemetery. There is a box elder on the north end of the cemetery that has a couple of branches that are hanging down over the top of a couple of headstones. And it would be necessary with a pole saw just to cut those two branches. I wouldn't ask them to cut the whole tree because that needs to be handled by a professional tree company. But just for Memorial Day coming up here pretty quick, it would make things look a little better at that north end of the, at the cemetery.
You have so noted it and our highway crew has heard you and thanks for the, thanks for the update. Appreciate it.
I think I was saying something, but I wasn't sure who can do it. I'll say.
That'll be done.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else on the Zoom call? Hearing none, we'll go straight to the, straight to the agenda and the first department headed reports. I've, I've kind of added Howard as, of course, he is a department head. We usually have him separately and not regular on here, but he is and he's here. So I'll ask Howard to come and address us on an E911 matter. If you would. Evening, Howard.
Evening. Sugarwood Hill Extension is a new road that was added to the 911 system. It's our newest road. And for more than a year now, the, the three families that live up there have been having trouble getting packages from one thing from UPS, FedEx and others and for people just finding them. I've worked with the 911 folks out of Montpelier. They've checked everything from their end. Saying everything is in place. Sometimes some things take a little while to get in place, but, but there's nothing more that they can do with it. But what I'm recommending is that we put another sign up. I think it would really help the situation here. What happens when people, if they're not familiar with the area, you're driving up Sugarwood Hill and you're looking for numbers of 1635 and 56 and, and right after you go by 119, you come to an intersection in the road and the signs there at that intersection have numbers on them that go from 352 to 994. Nothing says anything about anything beyond that. And so the temptation is to say, well, I don't know where it is and turn around and go back. But if there was a sign at that point, and I've sent information to all of you on this, a sign at that point in the homeowner's field, that that would really be the answer to take care of this.
Sounds like a safety issue.
And I agree. And as a 911 coordinator, I strongly recommend that we do that.
So I would move that we approve the request and ask our highway department to put the sign up as presented in the materials so that 1635 and 56 Sugarwood Hill Extension are correctly identified.
Motion's made, seconded, discussion. Mary, do you want to add any discussions since you're the motion maker?
Just that the reason I wanted to make sure Howard was in the loop on this is because he is our E911 coordinator. That's why.
Yep.
And this is, this is clarified along with the map. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Howard.
Joe, anything to add?
Only where would the sign go? Right there at the, I guess it's at that Y. Is that where we would put the sign that Sugarwood Hill Extension is north of there in the numbers? Because Walt's going to have to get the sign made. That'll have to be a custom sign. So, and then the location will be important after it is.
Yes, it goes at that, the Y in the road that you're speaking of. There's two signs there now. And it would go on the, the sign that's on the side towards Sugarwood Hill Extension and point that way. That's where it would go. Right at that intersection. I had sent you, I don't know if you saw it or not, Joe. I'd sent you emails and
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with that road and where stuff is and I, I guess that's a loop and the extension comes off the north end and it, and it makes it, if you don't travel the road every day, you'd probably miss it. So it's, it'll be, this is an easy fix.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, Kurt? Do you have anything on it? Hearing, hearing, hearing no further discussion on the motion, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously and you can get with Howard and
Yeah, I'll have Howard write it up how he wants it.
Okay.
Thanks, Howard.
Thank you, Howard. And you got another issue?
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
The next item I have is the listeners are requesting an extension for lodging the grand list. In fact, you have a letter here. We're asking for a 30-day extension. The grand list is supposed to be lodged June 4th for our town. And that's actually a week from this coming Friday. There's no way in the world it's going to get out. We're, we're well behind with a, with a whole lot of stuff. Partly, some of the things that changed this year, we had a lot of training that we had to get involved with, with the property evaluation and review. There was a complete changeover with the appraisal system and NIMRAC and everything. And it's been going on for a couple of years. And so we, we got tied up and we only took as little training as we felt we needed to, but, but that took a lot of time. We had a new map for this year and he did an outstanding job of comparing every parcel in the grand list to every parcel on the map. It resulted in making a number of, a lot of them were just minor, minor changes, but it, again, something that, that took time. The PTTRs, Kerry was loaded with other work. Those were late in getting to us. And so we just got the last of them last week and we just you know, crushing away in his current use stuff and utility work to be done. And the other thing that's happened is our computer, we have a, an issue with our computer. We, we have a security system, the Viper security system that doesn't like the camera system that we're using. And I mean, it's been, it's been for a month, maybe six months. We've been struggling with this thing. When, when we're working with a sketch in the program, it kicks us out and it basically says a known program attempting to run was blocked and it shuts everything down. And from that, what it means is the first thing we have to do, we have to re-register with Apex out of Texas, re-register to get back into their system. And we have to, when we get into their system, we have to go through several steps to bring in all of our cost tables and information for the Vermont information that we use. Then we log back into the NIMRAC system, log back into the, to the Microsoft system and wait for the next time. Now Dean Davis and I work Saturday. We get bumped out 15 times. It's just
So what's the answer to that?
I don't think there's an answer because they've worked on this thing several times and two Fridays ago, I had a technician from Viper who got on with me at 11 o'clock in the morning. And first of all, he said, probably be an hour and a half or so. I'll get what I need. He said, be during the noon hour. Well, that went on till five minutes of three, when I got a text from him saying, I'm going on lunch break from three to four. He said, I think I'm almost done and I'll be back after four. So after four, he said, okay, it's all done. And then, then I went and played with the program to get it blocked out. And, and it did. All of a sudden it came up and he says, perfect. That's just what I wanted. Perfect. We got what we want. And he was on the computer for another 15 or 20 minutes taking stuff. And he said, normally he said it's 48, 48 to 72 hours. Somebody will be getting back to you and it should be hopefully all set. I haven't heard a word and I have minimal to reach him. I don't think there's an answer. I mean, we, they, they have been on numerous times and it's, it's just this, this camera system that we have is used throughout the state.
So there really isn't anything you can do.
Well, there's got, let me speak to this a little bit. I talked to Bill about this because I, you know, I'm not that familiar with how the security system works. I mean, I know we need one and I know we have one and I was assuming that it was a good one because I was told it was. I have to tell you that in this age, when you're paying the bills, you're entitled to get what you're paying for. And I don't care whether this is, whether this is applicable to all the other ones in the state or anyone else. It is applicable to us. It is unacceptable to me to have this problem go on this long and cost this town. Well, Bill told me what the program costs. They have to be responsive to us. They must fix this or we must get another security system. They're not the only one out there. Now, I know they're good, but this is not good. And what Howard didn't tell you was that in addition to the kickouts, which are frequent and quite disturbing in the camera system, when they do the sketches, which they put a lot of time into some of these sketches, when it kicks it out, you lose all the work you've done. Now, if you want to start adding up costs, I could, I could ask the list, Lister Department, I could ask Howard to do a scan of how many, how many hours, how much time they're having to wait getting kicked out and back in. But it's non-productive time when they're waiting and then they're re-registering and whatever. And if the, if, if the, the announcement that they get on their computer when it's kicked out is that this is an unrecognized program? Well, it would seem to me in the digital world that this company certainly has a way to go into their system and make it recognized.
I got an email back from them today. It's, there's levels to their support. And they expect, they expect to have an answer for it tomorrow. Like it's 72 hours. That's tomorrow. So I, I reached out to them today. I need to get back to me. So it is a an anomaly that we, we are chasing and there, we cannot, they've put in exceptions and it's, it's, it is, there is there is no logic as to why it's, it keeps happening. So they're, they, when we do it, they get the log and they take the next step. So it's, we're, we will have a resolution for it. It's just they, they got to get the data to do it. So.
Okay. Well, how long has it been going on, Bill? Let's, let's reiterate this. Howard said months?
On and off for a couple of months. Yeah.
Couple of months?
Yeah. We have, we have short-term solutions, which we get into right now, but they're not ideal, but we have, we have short-term solutions. So, but, but we don't want, we want, we want to create a fix, not, not a workaround.
Well, yeah, you don't want to be tying them up, correcting this.
The other ways is shut.
No, don't even, don't even, don't even give them that information.
So I make the motion as far as the 30-day extension for them to get caught up with things.
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion's made and seconded that the listeners of the Town of Rutland be granted a, or that we request a 30-day extension from PVR and that the Select Board Chair sign, which is on this letter. Any further, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Joe.
Can I ask a question about the Viper system?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that recommended by the League of Cities and Towns?
By Vermont Digital and a couple of other places. So it's been, with the exception of this, this one thing, it's been an exceptional system.
Well, this is pretty big.
We know, but yeah.
Yeah, it's taken a lot of
We have been working on it and there's, there's no reason, there's no logic behind what's happening. So.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I'm not, I, listen, I, I understand you're trying and I understand they're trying, but I think we've, we've probably taken the feather approach up until this point. And I don't want to take the Billy Club approach, but you know, they've got to know that there's a next step if they don't get this thing fixed pretty quick. Because we're losing, we're paying for valuable time that's being wasted in our office with this thing. And, and these are critical functions of the Lister's office. I mean, really critical. So let's wait and see. We'll hope we get a, we will get an answer. So, and I don't know, I signed this copy. Is that enough?
Got a clean copy or, okay.
Well, you got, have you got one that's not staple? Because this is all staple and I don't want to rip it. Well, I guess I will.
I guess it didn't show up here.
Okay. Thank you, Howard.
All set. Thank you very much.
And thanks. Our next department head is Walt Tripp, our Road Commissioner. Evening, Walt.
Evening. We've been doing a lot of fill-in washouts, just small ones, nothing serious, but all handwork. So we've been busy. Dire road, the end of Dire Road's becoming a dump. I made a phone call, which it went directly just to a voicemail. Didn't hear anything back. But we're back there this morning and just in a week's time, there's two tractor tires down there now with rims. 15 tires, two loads of building debris plus other stuff.
Oh, my God.
So it's, you know, it just grows.
Where is this again?
Dire Road. Down by, behind John Deere tractor. It's Mondellus, I believe. That's who Billy come up the phone number and I made a phone call, but so it's just, you know, it's on their property.
It's on Mondellus.
We, we looked at the map and we figured it was, you know, on theirs.
Have you, have you looked at any of the debris? Is it recognizable?
Building debris and tires.
Do you recognize it as building debris coming from any specific locations?
Most of it's old, like somebody's cleaning the shed out or something behind their house, you know, taking the shed down or whatever. But it's just one of those, it's just gonna keep getting worse. So I just thought I'd let you know.
In the past, when we've had things like that, John Paul is health officer and we have that building debris ordinance.
Billy said that, you know, have me, I made the phone call and he said the next step would be JP.
JP, okay.
So.
So and you didn't get a response to the phone call?
No, it just went right directly to a voicemail. I left the message saying, you know, what the situation was and who I was and
Okay.
Well, so it's probably going to take JP making a call.
Two dump truck loads of stuff and plus the tires.
Oh, my gosh.
And now the tractor tires. I mean, tractor tires aren't something you're just going to pick up and throw in a truck.
Well, I believe, I believe he does still have a summer residence here. I mean, he's, he's in Florida. He's in the villages, but
There was Billy, what was there? Three different managers or something?
We don't have detailed contact information, so it's kind of what we can kind of piece together. So.
They'll get in touch with me tomorrow. I, I knew a name.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll get on it with some enforcement.
And Billy had gotten a letter from Blair Enman from Oxokee. There's a drop inlet in the lower part of his lawn and he thought it was plugged. But we've been up there twice, but on the other side, which I believe is Mullins, they rip wrapped the edge of the stream and that's where that culvert discharges. So they covered that discharge. We went up this morning and I mean, it's all, you know, picking rocks, trying to find the culvert, but I don't believe that's ours. I don't know who rip wrapped it.
Well, but we didn't do it.
We didn't do it.
So I guess
It is draining, so it's not plugged. I mean, there's water.
Big rip wrap, is it three inch minus or what, what size is it?
Rip wrap? Well, it's probably 12 inch minus.
Oh, wow. All right. Well,
Along the whole stream.
Water will get through that.
Yeah, as long as it isn't. I mean, we couldn't find a culvert just because there's so much stuff there.
It certainly won't be a heavy flow coming out of the pipe with rocks that big in front of it discharged.
See, there's been beavers in there last year and it, you know, damped it up. So it probably backed the water up on the layer side. But right now it's, the catch basin was empty, you know, as low as it could be.
Okay. Well, it doesn't appear at this point that it's our problem. That would be my
And they're reclaiming Quarter Line Road tomorrow, starting our paving.
Okay, good.
And next week we'll start moving road sides.
Good.
That's all I have.
Good. Thank you. Any questions of our Road Commissioner? If you could, I didn't, I didn't meet with the committee and I didn't see your report. If you could just put a list of the roads to be paved and whatever. I'm gonna, unless you intend to put them in the circle.
I'm not going to.
Oh, okay. Well, no, I would just
Billy's got the list on the, our original, I mean, I've got it someplace, but
Okay.
It's part of the, the bids.
Yeah, it's, what we're doing. Gloria in a net.
Quarter Line Road.
Lane.
Yeah, Channel Lane, Quarter Line.
Quarter Line, the lower part of Quarter Line, we're reclaiming the, from the bridge to the 408, just the shim and overlay.
And then
Those, and then Town Line Road, which is our major one. But that's, won't be till August, September.
Right. No, it's, it's just, it's good to let the people know which roads are going to be done and we don't give them a timeframe because we don't, we don't really have one. Just they'll be done. Good. Any, no questions? Joe, you got any questions?
If I take the phone off of mute, I could, well, are you happy with the repairs to the chipper? Is it all good?
Well, yeah, it's just like brand new. They did an excellent job.
Okay, very good. That's, and, and is the, I believe that was all on the insurance of the person that hit it, right?
Well, I believe VLCT is paying for it right now. Then they're going to try and get the money from the other person.
Okay. Thanks, Walt.
Yep. Good, good question, Joe. Good answer. Well, thank you. Jason Bathlon, our Acting Water and Sewer Commissioner. Evening, Jason.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Only thing I've got is Walt and I went to Home Depot yesterday to price out some sod. And once we got out of the truck, we smelled a real bad smell like sewer. So further of looking, we noticed that the manhole was bubbling out of some sewer water. So we went into Home Depot, spoke to three different people. They didn't seem to be too worried about it. They knew about it. So Walt took a initiative to give JP a call. And he went right up there and we went back this morning and noticed that there's nothing bubbling out. We saw A1 Sewer and Drain going behind Home Depot to get that cleared up.
Super. That's what I call a very good response time.
I say so.
Yeah. That's what we call getting right on top of a situation.
And Bill had called the state also, I should say.
Good. Well, it's also good for the, I mean, these things happen. It's a, it's a function of the process. And it's nice that our businesses know that we're keeping track of this kind of stuff. And it's also nice for us to know that they care enough to take care of it when it happens. This is good all around.
That's all. They could have put in some cones around there so people didn't have to walk through it because we thought it was just overflow from them watering the plants, but
Watering something.
Something was being watered. Yeah.
Thank you. Good job. Good job.
Anybody else?
Anybody have any questions for Jason? Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Kerry Clark, our Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good evening, moneybags.
Moneybags?
Well, that's what, that's what we call our town treasurer when, when we're such a solvent town.
Evening. Let's see. I have a report on our taxes for the year since we're all finished. Did great, actually. The third installment, we collected 94% of our taxes. And overall total, we have collected 97.3% of our property taxes.
Bad.
Yeah, that's great. So we are turning the rest over to Jim Schultz, our delinquent tax collector. I'm making the warrant tomorrow, closing out the program. I spoke to Jim and he will be picking it up on Thursday. And currently, we have already collected a lot Um, and currently, um, we have already collected a lot of delinquent taxes, considered delinquent taxes for him since May tenth. Um, but we hold on to them until fifteen days after the last due date. And he comes and grabs them and, um, anything after that, um, will just be handled by Jim solely. Um, so if anyone questions that, they usually hear us say the penalty and that's the one percent charge and then you gotta call Jim. So, good news on one end and, you know, there's always delinquent taxes anyway. So, uh, there's that. Um, I was looking to see if we received our one percent tax from the room, um, room tax and the meals tax that usually comes in May and as of today, we have not received it. I'll continue to check every single day, um, usually around this time we get that. I'm interested to see what, what that is, because we've been doing and averaging really great and over what we expected. Um, and then the last thing that I have is, um, just an update on the training that Susan and I went to in Killington. Um, it was, uh, an overview of our new tabulators for the election system. And they're, they're fancy and they're great and I think that everyone is going to enjoy them. Um, it's recommended that Susan and I, um, since we were trained, that we will kind of oversee and stand near the tabulators, um, on election in August as well as in November. Um, it looks a little different to the voter and it's more interactive with the voter, so, um, we will have to advise everyone how to use that. It's pretty straightforward, but there are a couple changes. Um, other than that, it's a seamless system and I think it's gonna be a great thing. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Nope.
Anyone?
I, I saw the bins underneath the voting machines, they're much bigger, so all of the stuck ballot things we've had in the past, we shouldn't have this time.
Yeah, that's good.
They're very well thought out, um. Uh, it, they look like recycle bins, but, um, they have compartments for each.
Don't say that, we'll read it in the paper.
We're not using the votes from last time, no, we're not recycling those.
They, I guess I should say they're the size of a recycling bin. Um, but they have their purpose and they were well thought out and designed. And, um, so far, um, they, they look, it's a touchscreen. I mean, we're, we're moving up in the world. It feels good, so.
Just, uh, as an, as an anecdotal kind of thing, um, you know, town clerk, town treasurer usually has a kind of a pulse beat and you're the one that gets to take these taxes when people come in, especially when they come in personally to pay them. Could, could you give us kind of a summary of comments that you get? I mean, is it overall, um, complaints, is it overall?
Uh, okay.
What's the feeling that you get?
Um, so during the tax season on a regular basis, I'm not, um, I, I'll talk to just, you know, up until May tenth, um, you get most people being pretty compliant. Um, and I mean, I think you get this anywhere, people are compliant or people don't quite understand yet. Or, and they need a little bit more education on their tax bill, or they don't want education and don't like it anyway. So, I mean, you get the run of the gamut, um.
And it jerk out when they don't like it, right?
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes.
The way they feel.
Um, mm-hmm, um, in particular, I must comment a little bit on what I've heard in the last couple of weeks since the last payment, um, and this happens every year and I'm sure past town clerks can say the same thing. Um, people really, um, okay. So there's some people that come in and they own it. They're like, I had one person and she was lovely and she's like, I'm walking, the, I, I'm, I'm doing the walk of shame, is how she put it. And, and she knew she was late. I mean, we have a policy, it's been in place in, for years. It's really not on any one of us, it's a policy. Um, so she got it, she did what she needed to do. And she went on with her day. Um, and then you have the other end of that spectrum. Um, it's all my fault and, um, you know, even though I, I break it down for them and, and, you know, tell them everything and explain, you know, the eight percent and the delinquent taxes and all that good stuff, it's still my fault. Um, so what are you gonna do, really? Um, and then you have the people that complain but understand, so you get, you get it all.
Yep.
Good.
Um, mm-hmm.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Interesting. Carrie, were there any surprises among the delinquents?
Um, well, I can speak to two things, um, so most of the people that are coming in after the date, um, I've heard a lot of it just slipped my mind. And, and it happens. I mean, it's happened to all of us for every reason or for every bill, um. But one of the great things to, um, celebrate, I think, um, is the recent sale of the ground round. And that was on the delinquent list and that just happened last week. Um, and it's now going to be the splash car wash. I got the recording on that, um, they paid the delinquent taxes. And they paid this year's delinquent taxes as well, so that's a huge chunk off of our huge chunk off of the total, huge, yeah. So, the turnover to Jim because of that is kind of lower than most years, so that's good. That's something to celebrate. Thank you.
Any other questions of our town clerk treasurer? Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Our next report is Chris Clark, our fire chief. Evening, Chris.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Good. Uh, the only thing I really got is, uh, we went out last week, four of us, to see the new truck in Minnesota. Uh, it looks good. Uh, we had a few things they were gonna change for us, um. Couple of things were missed, couple of things were added. Um, Rosenbauer did say that all the change orders we're doing, they are gonna pay for because the truck is late and they understand we've been waiting for it. Uh, the only exception is we, the fire department, forgot to add in a pump house heater. So we need to get that added if you approve. So a pump house heater and a auxiliary coolant heater is an extra six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. So if you, uh.
See that number? Say that number again, Chris.
Six thousand eight hundred fifteen. So with everything they gotta do with that or without that, whatever you guys want, um, the truck should be leaving Minnesota in about two weeks. And heading to Massachusetts to their other plant where they do the final, um, mounting of stools and brackets and so on. So the truck should be here, I'm gonna say within a month.
Okay.
So, I, I would make, I would make a motion that, yeah, I would like to make a motion that we approve the, um, six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars for the, uh, necessary heating, um, components to the truck that, uh, in cold weather, you gotta have, so.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded, now we're open to discussion on that.
Any questions?
I had a question, but you go first, Mary.
Um, Chris, where, what, um, pot of money are you going to tap to pay this?
Uh, well, I was probably just gonna take it out of the depreciation fund, like the rest of the truck is paid for, um. I could take it out of my budget, doesn't matter.
Well, depreciation fund would make sense, yeah, yeah.
My, my question, Chris, is more of a functional question. How did this oversight happen?
It's something we missed, on all our notes, but didn't get put into the final spec sheet, so just a mistake on our part.
Well, wouldn't you have thought that that company would have called you long before now, with all the money that they're making to, to, to have alerted you to that?
Nope, they would not do that. They build the fire trucks to the specifications the town gave them, don't they, Chris? And they don't add anything on their own.
And no, they don't.
Well.
No, the reason I, the reason I ask, Chris, is that it's always, it was a long time ago since I was involved with that kind of stuff. Joe, you were involved for quite a while, but usually you have a truck committee and they're usually pretty fastidious about every little detail and it would seem that these heaters are, are not something that would be overlooked, but that's just, that, you know, that's just my thought. I mean, we gotta pay for them.
Nobody's perfect, so it just got forgotten.
Okay, well, takes a bigger man to admit when you make a mistake, so I appreciate that. Um, yeah, we, uh, we've got a motion on the floor, was, it was seconded, yes. Any further discussion on the motion to pay the six thousand eight hundred and fifteen out of the depreciation fund? The fire department depreciation fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously and you got your money. And, oh.
Thank you. They'll start putting it in. I'll, I'll call them tomorrow and they'll start putting it in, so it should be good.
Good.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, Chris. We look forward to seeing that shiny new truck.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll stop by and talk to them. Um, our next report is Barbara Noyes-Pulling, planning commission chairman. Good evening, Barb.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the planning commission has been putting the finishing touches on, um, a survey, an energy survey we'd like to send out to residents. I believe you have copies of our most recent version. And, um, we're trying to pull that together so we can get it in the next circle. Um, that it is out there, it will be available online and, uh, get people answering it. So it will be, um, an online survey primarily. We'll start that way, see how that goes. Um, it's a good way to tabulate and, and, you know, look at the results and, um, get graphs and, and other kinds of, of analysis of the answers. Um, it's a pretty thorough, uh, survey, but I, I think it's approachable enough that, that the people will, um, go in, they can mention things that they've done. Um, mention things that, uh, they're thinking about and even offer some suggestions for what the town might continue to do along the lines of energy conservation, efficiency, et cetera. So, yeah, we've been working with the energy committee of the select board, uh, Mary, and, uh, this is what we came up with.
Barb, when you mentioned the circle, you, you don't, you don't intend to have this whole thing in the circle, you're just talking about notifying people in the circle that this is underway and that they will be getting it.
Yeah, yeah, the latter, right. We'll start, uh, the, you know, publicity about the survey with the circle, um. I can write something for Front Porch Forum as well and, and, uh, we'll see what we can do with the town website to get the word out.
We're, we're not mailing paper copies, just to be clear, that, that's not the intent, it's to make it an online, you know.
Right, so people are alerted.
And take the survey there.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
I think she started to say something.
I, oh, well, go ahead, Barbara, I didn't mean to interrupt your report, you.
Oh, I think I was just, I, I think I just opened up my mouth. But yeah, we will start the on, with an online version, see how that goes. We can always go to hard copies. Um, we were talking to Mary about maybe, uh, doing something, the townwide celebration. And, um, you know, th- th- this might take a few months to get, um, you know, as much of a response as we want and at the townwide celebration, um, we could, uh, promote it there. And, uh, you know, have people maybe use a QR code if they haven't seen it or don't go online or maybe even have copies there. We'll, we'll see how the response is going. At that point, it's a few months away.
Great. Uh, listen, board members, uh, I would like to suggest that we take at least one meeting cycle to digest this, because we don't usually get reports that are four or five pages long and the energy committee's put a lot of time into this, but I think we're not going to review it tonight as we sit here, so, uh, I'd like to just suggest that we will take this up for decision, for agenda, action item at our next meeting. If that's possible, Mary?
Um, yeah, I don't think that's a problem, as long as we can put something in the circle saying it's coming.
Right, no, I don't have a problem with that. Because I, I think we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, but we do, we don't usually act on things this long.
Yeah, just a reminder.
If it had been in the packet, I would not say that, because we're responsible for digesting stuff that's in the packet, so. But anyways, is that okay with the board?
Yep.
Uh, hearing no objection, that's what we'll do and thank you, Mary, for that report. You want, do, did you wanna speak to the report itself?
Um, just a, I mean, the energy committee did meet to review this in particular and remember that we have a component, an energy component in our town plan. One, one of the things we try and do is pick up something and do it. What is recommended in the town plan, so that when the day comes and we intervene as a town in either a section two forty-eight hearing or an act two fifty hearing. And, and we say, we want this developer to do this, we have been doing our part and that's why we do things like this, is to show that the town is moving forward on the things that are in our energy plan.
Nice, thank you. Any questions on the energy committee report? Okay. Barbara, is that? Is that it for the evening?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. How, how's the ordinance work going? I mean, you've been pretty heavy at this, so, um, have you spent any time at all with the, uh, like the animal ordinance or the trash ordinance or the?
Yeah, we were going to start with, um, the building, just building notification, construction notification ordinance. Um, some of the key players, um, were not in Vermont over the winter, so that was delayed, so we're, we're taking a renewed look at that. Um, and, uh, well, we should have something shortly for you. On, on that whether we need to do much more or, um, whether we just need to add um, some, um, stipulations or other things to what is already there. Um, I forget the name of the permit. There, there is an ordinance already that notifies people that they need a building permit. Um, so we might be able to work with that, which would be, uh, much simpler. Um, but we're, we're still, we're still working through that and then we'll get to some of the other ordinances.
Good. I think you'll hear some more, if you wanna, if you wanna stay on with us, I think you'll hear some more when Bill gives his report about that particular building. I think you'll hear some more when Bill gives his report about that particular building situation. Um, okay, good. And, um, yeah. Okay, thank you, Barb.
Okay, thank you.
Our, our next report would be Ed Dumas, our police chief. Good evening, Chief.
So first thing will be calls for service. We had six calls for service for traffic stops for a total of 70. Around the south end of town, again. Also had a large uptake, not only throughout the town, the city and the rest of the county of, uh, the people going into vehicle, uh, the people's cars, they leave them unlocked in their door yards. People are going through the cars, taking any spare change. They think it's not, no big deal. Well, if you get, you do 100 cars a night and you get three or $4 on each car, that adds up to quite a bit of money. We believe, we know who the characters are, uh, but we have to catch them in the act. And so that takes some time. There's warrants for the arrests right now. Uh, we actually went out Sunday night because we had a vehicle stolen in the town. Uh, it's important that you take your keys out of your car, leave nothing in that you like, lock the doors if you can, and have a garage per minute. And then, uh, yeah, we, so we went out on a Sunday night, early morning, Monday, in patrol for four and a half hours trying to. We had one person that we tried to catch, but he was quite elusive, put it that way. Well, they come out at dark and it's hard to see him sometimes. The other thing that's happening is a gas theft. Uh, people are drilling the gas tanks out and getting gas out of their, bottom of their cars. So I suspect it's just a matter of time before maybe, uh, the fire department get called for a fire underneath someone's car, maybe someone still under there too.
Well, they will because the, most of the people that have this done to them don't find out until they go to the gas station to fill it up. And all of a sudden, there's a big trail of gas running underneath their car.
Or it's empty and it was full the morning before, so that's another issue we're having. That's, is the price of gas continues to climb. I think that's about all I have at this point.
Okay. Uh, yeah, the, oh, did you get any update on the June 15th meeting?
I have not, just that we're having one, just that we're having a meeting. I haven't heard any more about it.
Uh, just to refresh your memory, the, the city, uh, project vision was handling the coordination of this and, uh, and with the chief, with Chief Kilkollin, uh, to have the state at a meeting where they could answer some very pointed questions about the whole homeless situation in the southern tier. And we, the town will be a part of that meeting. As I envision it, and I've said this, I said this before, that it's, it's going to be an open public meeting, open to the public. It's going to be held, uh, it's planned to be held at the Rutland Intermediate School Auditorium, which, which happens to be what some of us old timers would call the RHS Auditorium, because that was our high school auditorium. Um, but my, but my, uh, my intention is that, uh, our police chief and myself as chair and Mary Ashcroft as, uh, the other, um, intermunicipal committee member would be the, the kind of participants at this meeting because it is an intermunicipal event. It's the town and the city trying to tackle this problem, so.
Don, we're giving out scholarships that night.
Oh, my.
So I think.
What time? Cause I don't know what.
That's, that's the one Kurt's gonna be going with you.
So you, you go.
Well, if the meeting.
And then Kurt and I will do the.
I think the meeting might be.
Meeting might be at 10 o'clock in the morning.
I had it listed because I took it out of the paper at 6:30 at night, so there would be a conflict, so.
Okay, well, they haven't, they haven't finalized that yet, but if they, if they do, then fine, but you are, you are welcome.
You want me cloned, Don?
You can whisper stuff in my ear, Mary, and I could, I could take a gentler tone and try to paraphrase.
Can I come over and sit near you?
No, this, you're gonna like this, folks, uh, you know, and I, and I, I kind of, I kind of jumped on our chief a little bit for this because he's, he's so modest, number one, and number two, he's, he is, he's the executive authority of the police department, number two. So, uh, I, I thought it would be more appropriate for me to share this with you folks and folks at home than Ed because it's, uh, it's a, it's a whole bunch of kudos. Back in April, uh, there was the offering of a grant program, a congressional grant program offered through the state of Vermont, uh, which was opened up to grant applications for emergency, um, emergency services and, and security. And, uh, our deputy chief, Ted Washburn, approached Ed and said, well, you know, do you think it would be appropriate? Can I put an applicant, can I put a grant application in for this? And Ed said, sure, just go for it. So he did. He wrote the grant application. And he wrote the grant application for $2,154,550, which is the total remaining cost of the, uh, of our public safety building. And he submitted it through the state as, as he was told. Um, those applications, there were 100, were forwarded to Congress, Congressman Welch's office. And Congressman Welch and his staff went over these and selected 15. Rutland Town was among the 15 that were selected. And this letter that I have in my hot little hands here, uh, was just sent to the town. It's dated April 28th, 2022. It's a letter from Congressman Welch's office to the Honorable Rosa DeLorio, who is Chair of the Committee on Appropriations for the U.S. House of Representatives, and the Honorable Kay Granger, who is ranking member of the Committee on Appropriations for the U.S. House of Representatives. And it says, Dear Chair DeLoro and Ranking Member Granger, I am requesting funding for Rutland Town Public Safety Center to create a new public safety center to house the police, fire department and emergency management. The entity to receive funding is the town of Rutland located at 181 Business Route 4, Center Rutland, Vermont 05736. $2,154,550 in congressional support is needed to replace a deteriorating public safety building by building a new public safety center, allowing the police and fire departments to conduct their daily operations for the coming decades. I certify that neither I nor my immediate family has any financial interest in this project. Sincerely, Peter Welch, Member of Congress. That request now sits in the Appropriations Committee and is part of some bill. I'm still gonna get updates on whether it's part of an omnibus bill or a master appropriations bill, but I'm sure there are, uh, some amount of millions, up to billions of dollars because this is across the whole United States, and he's only one congressman. I don't think we could possibly get any better news than this. And, uh, well, my personal thanks to our congressman for selecting us as one of the 15 that he felt worthy and deserving of this kind of support. It's, it's humbling to say, to say the least. And, um, it's also humbling to know that we have a department and a deputy chief with this kind of dedication to this town. And, um, and I know, I know Ed feels the same way, but, uh, this, he deserves, this is way, way over and above the call of duty. And he had the, well, some have a Spanish word for this, but it's a gumption to, uh, to write this grant for the full amount and then receive consideration and approval of it. So we can, uh, when we hear, uh, when we hear JP's report on, uh, as, for, as clerk of the works, we might find that the coordination between that and the approval for this, because I would think that this is the fiscal year. They've already, they've already called, uh, before this letter was sent, they called and checked and said, do you believe that the, that this, these funds could be spent in 2023? And Ted said, well, sure, we can spend the money, so, well, I guess it remains to be seen. It's seldom that you get good news as good a news as this, uh, and anyways, good job, Ed, you know, it's.
Thanks to the Slick Board to sign the thing for our deputy chief and all the previous Slick Board members did to make this happen. Had all those plans in place, or we would not even have.
And also that we responded positively to Marty Wasserman's request that we include the, the emergency management, uh, component in our public service building because.
And also the taxpayers, they voted for us to have this, so thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
That match was an important part of this request.
Yes, very much so, yes.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Things coming together. Thank you, Ed. Next report, Mike Rowe, our Recreation Director. And also the seniors' social director. Nice, nice job. Thanks for the funding, Mike, you know?
Oh, that's not a problem. We, we've done it for many years in the early spring and then lunch and then the dinner. So last year we were at Pascal Beer's at Sugar and Spice, I think.
Yes.
The first, and, and it was this time of the, uh, right around this time of year. So, yes, my wording was interesting, but yes, we, that's part of what I believe we should do, so.
Well, we appreciate it.
Figure that out and make that happen. They're a wonderful group. Um, hopefully they didn't get, um, and don't take this the wrong way, more deaf after their front row seats of the band today, literally closer than you and I to a 20-piece middle school band playing. I felt bad for them, um, only because it was literally in your face.
Well, there's one beauty.
And they sounded great, so.
There's one beauty of these.
Yeah, yeah.
They have a rocker switch which goes both ways, so.
But I'm glad you were there. I'm glad we're able to entertain the seniors again back at school so they can kind of see what they invest in and what it's like. Um, that's always important, just for a community, a good community. So thank you guys for going, and, and I know the kids are thrilled. As I was telling the seniors before, that the kids have played for the seniors more than they've played for their parents because they played at the holiday one and this one, and their parents haven't seen them play yet. So, uh, a little extra.
Oh, they were really, they were really great.
Aaron does a fantastic job of it. We are very fortunate to, to have them and that dedication of the kids. So otherwise, um, things going well. Uh, the pool is all ready to go. Um, it's all cleaned and power washed and all the guck is out of the bottom, which if you ever want to have that fun, you can come on down. I'll put you down in there and you can shovel what's left at the bottom. It's quite interesting. Thanks to Walton.
Been there, done that.
Been there, done that.
With the, with the power washer and, and, uh, cleaning up the wood chipper saved us. Thank God it came back in time, so that was great. Thank you. That's, that's helped out. Cleaning up the park, it seemed the winter was pretty brutal on the park in general and the pool area in general. So I want to thank them for that. Uh, mowing's going well, T-ball, the baseball's going great. Weather's been kind of so-so, but they're pushing through it and, um, the kids are having fun. Our pool signups are the first and second, so next week, which is what, Wednesday, Thursday? Wednesday, Thursday from 5 to 7 at the pool, you can sign up for swim lessons. We are going back to our normal payment for attendance and for passes. We, past couple of years, we forgave that for residents. Go back to the $2 for adults and a dollar for kids to enter and then selling our passes to everybody for everything. So we are gonna go back to that. The water cooler that we received with Billy's help, uh, was put in yesterday, so that's great. We have a water dispenser there, so that works out well. Um, the grass seems to be growing like no tomorrow at this point. Uh, to those of you that will want, you know what we're talking about. Other than that, we're just looking forward, the seniors did set their second day, which is the 26th. Or July is on the fifth, July 26th, which is a Tuesday, that'll be the party at the pool. Um, so for your halfway beef burger and, uh, salads and sides from the kids, please, uh, mark your calendar down. We're gonna go at 11 o'clock, which we shouldn't do on a Tuesday. So please, uh, mark down, everyone in the department is welcome and encouraged to attend as well to, uh, have the meal, um, right there at the pool. Um, other than that, we got a little bit of cracking in the pool. I'm hoping to patch that, uh, today or tomorrow, and then we'll go from there. It, um, it's showing, um, but it's gonna make it, it'll be fine. Other than that, I don't have a lot. Oh, there is a, Bill, did you get to print that out and put that on there? So CV, no, CV, um, Velco, um, part of our mountain biking project is there's a, a small bridge that's being constructed. And Velco has graciously donated the poles, um, and they're gonna give us a few extra poles. So if we ever need to do any kind of bridge work or anything within the park, um, they're going to dump them. And there's a waiver or something that we have to fill out to allow that to happen. So I think if Dawn, I don't know how many signatures are on it, but Bill put it in there. It's from Velco, something about a pole, something, donation or whatever it is. So if you could talk about that and, and just get your opinion and then we can move that forward because I think they want to dump them fairly soon. And they're gonna dump them back for that sure pack in across the old pit at pool, you know, there's that pile of sure pack there right down the back road. They should be able to get a whole truck in there or something like that without a problem, right? Well, they should be. I said if they couldn't, worst case, we could dump them close to the, um, brush pile area and drag them down. But they should be able to.
We can, we can move it.
Okay, they should be able to get the truck down in there. I mean, we take the loader down in there, so.
And the wood truck they bring.
Right, so I've talked, been in touch with the person that's gonna donate, so they should have that all scoped out. But hopefully we'll get a few more poles than we need and we can use them for whatever we, like, might need them for. But did you find that, Don, what I?
Yes, it's, it's a pretty standard agreement that they have and, uh, it's asking for a recipient desires to take, own, utilize, transport and eventually dispose of certain wooden poles previously used in the transmission of electricity. And Velco agrees to convey title, if any, ownership, if any, in possession of one or more pole structures in exchange for recipient's acceptance of sole responsibility for the transportation of the pole structures from their respective locations in site two, that's on the site. Uh, a complete release and general waiver of all present and future liability for pole structures in full indemnity for any and all resultant damage and recipient may experience after title to the pole structures, thus in recipient. And.
It's a waiver of liability.
Wave of liability.
It's, it's asking the town to assume any liability associated with the treated wood.
How do you feel about that?
I prefer to have our town attorney take a look at this. That's my recommendation.
I think because of what they dipped the poles in sometimes, that that's probably a wise decision.
And the attachment outlines that too.
I think that's probably a better.
Okay. So, no, I, I, that's why I went to you. I'm not gonna sign that.
Some of that dates back to, I remember, because we've gotten some polls from the phone company in the past. Some of that dates back to, they've had people build retaining walls with these poles before. And then the poles fall over and there's pole numbers and they try to go back on the power company or whatever because of, they allowed them to take the poles. So some of it's, Velco's writing off their liability.
Right, and some of that, some of that older stuff, what they dipped it in is carcinogenic, so.
Okay.
You know, you want to find out before you.
Moving forward, could, as soon as that is presented to, um, town attorney and, and they're okay with it, can we take a motion for Dawn to sign it and give it to Bill so we can?
Can we put it on our agenda?
Yeah, whatever, whatever works.
Yeah.
Whatever. Cause I'll notify them that we're going to go through this process first.
Well, instead of waiting two weeks, could we, could we, could we amend the motion to allow me to sign it subject to the approval by our town attorney? Because if he says yes, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to override them. So why wait two weeks? We don't have
Well, I guess the quest, so, so the underlying question is, do we assume this liability? And, and it's back to this is going to be in a public park area. And do, I'm assuming it's going to save us some cost here in the construction.
Yes.
Yeah. Do we have any idea how much is, I mean, this is the cost benefit.
No, we, 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 there's parts of this mountain biking that we're adding and that cost could be reduced by using the poles that are donated. It's either that or we're going and buying timber or cutting down timber in the park like we did for the building. And having it milled.
You're using them for the bridge beams and then you're decking.
Exactly.
Yeah. So the public's not going to be exposed to them. They'll have decking on top of them.
Correct.
Actually them being treated will make them last longer when they're sitting on the ground.
There's no real purpose in us recommending this to our town attorney unless we intend to respect his opinion. I mean, otherwise we would just do it on our own.
Yeah.
And I, and quite frankly, I, I like Mary's suggestion of having our town attorney review it because it's a legal document. So if he says okay, I think we should just go, well, I think we should go ahead with it. But you know, if you want to vote to do that, that's up to you guys.
So move, I guess.
Second. This is to have our
Attorney look at it. And if the attorney approves, then we'll have
Okay. There's a motion and a second to have the attorney to have, to have the attorney review it. And if he finds it acceptable for us to sign it and give it back to Transco. Any discussion on that motion, Joe?
No, I'm all set. That's, that's a, you know, that's a prudent thing to do. I just want to make a mention that the town is very lucky that they're willing to give them these poles and do it. I have been trying to get one out of Green Mountain Power or somebody for about three years and they no longer give them to people. Because people would get in fights over the poles and they had all kinds of problems. So I think the town should just thank its lucky stars. They're willing to give them a pole or two.
Well, if we have one left over, Joe.
Guess who's going to get it, Joe?
Yeah.
Give me the person I called, Joe. I'll second Joey's concern because I just went through it with him on a pole replacement up on McKinley and they were gracious enough to give me a couple of poles, but they had to, they had to cut them to a certain length and
You got them to cut the poles for you?
Well, sure they did. They, they have to cut them. They won't give you a full length pole because of other restrictions they have, but the, the, the person that wanted these poles is a cousin of mine that wanted it to build a bridge across the small stream up in Florence and he needed them 30 feet long. So I got some 30 foot long poles. But I got lucky, Joe. So is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion's approved. Well, Bill, if you could forward that to him, then we'll be all set and I'll just put on here. Yeah. I think I'll just leave it on my desk. Okay. Next up is Mr. John Paul Fagin.
Okay.
Oh, well, I did have one question.
I was gonna just
Oh, I'm sorry.
Usually you say, are you all not ready for your mic? But you just kicked me right to the curb.
Okay.
Really?
Slap me, Mike. Go ahead. Oh, Sharon did it for you. She's good at that. You got a lot of practice too. Go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry.
I know. I just, in general, when you were talking about, we have a lot of people that have helped the park in a lot of ways. From the Boy Scouts to, to all of you that have volunteered. And we have people in our community that are fortunate that work for these companies that are willing to offer and donate stuff to make the town better. And it's like with anything, without people like that, you don't get things. So it's like Mary Beth and Andy who are working on our Act 250 out of the gracious effort of their time to make sure that we do it right. So we can't thank those kind of people enough. And so people like Velco that are generous to the town, we need to truly thank them and appreciate that, that that's how things get done. And it's nice that we have people like that in our town. We don't have to really fight for certain things and we're fortunate. Other than that, I really don't have anything else unless some, anybody has any questions for me. Sure.
Just a question for the circle article. Are you going to mention the seniors' luncheon?
I can, unless Randy does a little blur. Well, since they're kind of in that tradition, I remember that Jim used to put something in there.
Yeah.
So I don't, I'm not going to step on Randy's toes, but I don't know if Jim, if you could talk to Jim and say, does Randy want to do this?
Okay.
In the past, Jim has put in something from the seniors.
Okay.
So
I'll check.
But yeah, anything we need to do. We are looking to open July, June 4 on the weekends, if the weather is good for the pool.
Good.
I'll be home cooking. Sorry. I have a big family for you.
You can bring the extras down and then go swimming if you like, or play pickleball. Cause hopefully by then we'll be able to
You're going, you're going to play against me?
I am. I've already had people calling me about setting up tournaments and
Right. Cause that's, I'd play pickleball down at
They're, they're already calling me and I'm like, well, as soon as I get the lines, I think put the nets out and
They'd like to do a tournament at the end of the year. And Yep. So I said, they said, do you have any connection up there? I said, a little.
Yeah.
August 27th would be a great day for a pickleball
Right. Exactly.
Great day for great weather.
Oh, gosh. Well, let me tell you, some of these folks will play pickleball in the middle of a monsoon.
Just our pool partners are back on for the school. So everything's kind of coming back to normal. So that's happening as well.
Well, that's good.
So that the kids are really excited about that.
Now, when does school close?
School closed, last day of school is June 17. And graduation for all in town is June 15.
It's later and later every
No, it's actually pretty early.
Is it?
It seems
It is. We're in the twenties usually when we get out. Yes, this is early.
I had forgotten.
This is snow days.
I graduated on June 11.
They only had two and then we had two COVID days and they forgave the four. Otherwise we were going into the next week. So All I have unless anybody else says anything for me. Okay.
Barry, they're going to cut you a break this year this night, are they?
Three things now.
Three things. Payback.
And you don't cut me one either.
Fine, Ross, I'll be again.
Wanted to get the camera up real close to look at this welt on my left elbow.
I could just, I want to see you sippy for the judge and say this little hundred pound waif.
I just want to, I just want to let you know that I don't, I don't, nor have I ever had a ponytail. But I am going to give this report in John Paul Fagin's absence. Okay, this, these are reports forwarded to me and I No, and I give, I give JP's apology because he had a really, this was an important thing. He was pressed into, he was pressed into secret service. Because I think I can, I can let it out of the bag now because it's like long past time, but his, his gal's parents wanted to plan a surprise birthday party. And JP's mission was to get her there without her knowing it. So that's what he had to do for his, for his lovely Marie. So that's where he is this evening. And we do excuse him, but he was good enough to, to forward a full report to me on a number of issues. So the first thing is public safety building attached, and you have those on your desk right now because I asked Bill to put them out there. This is a nice full page drawing. Attached are the most recent drawings showing much more detail. Both departments were great in getting information together such that we may be able to put it out to bid this fall. This is our public service building. Also attached is a status from the civil engineers, which is self explanatory. Didn't put, I didn't put that out, but if you can, he can put that out. Bill can put that out to you. I just didn't want to complicate the on the desk packet anymore. So there's the, that's a report on the public safety building and we're, we're, we're just proceeding along very judiciously to get this thing out to bid as soon as we can expeditiously.
I make one request.
Yep.
And that is somewhere on this. It shows the space that would be used for emergency management.
Right.
As needed, just so we can send this in as in support of our earmark request to Congressman Welch.
Right.
Okay. And I'm guessing that would be somewhere near the break conference room area.
Yeah, I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking. Is that what you had planned at? Yeah. Okay. Well, let's, let's mark that up that way. Ed, I'll leave it to you to get with JP and, and see that that gets done.
Okay.
And so that we can, it'll be a small change to this plot.
Not going to change any dimensions. It's just
Just going to identify.
Identify it as EMS and we'll be set. Although I, well, I don't want to say that. Anyways, health officer report. The property on Perkins Road, which you received an email on debris and trash and which continues. And is currently in default right now of a board of health order to clean the property up. JP's been working on this with the, with the gentleman that owns the property. I had been in touch. Now I'm speaking for JP. I had been in touch with the owner to work with him. However, COVID hit and the property continues to deteriorate. I will touch base with Kevin, it's our town attorney, to see if the passage of time requires that I file another order. In the meantime, I will again attempt to find an informal agreement to clean the property. So because he's working with another landowner who at this point, because of negotiations and so forth, will be, remain nameless, but someone is interested in trading the cost of the cleanup for transfer of the property, which the gentleman has no intention of using for anything else apparently but trash. So and there is a brook involved with this. So that's part of the consideration. But I think we, I think we ought to give our, give our town health officer the opportunity to, to complete this and with your permission, I will contact the land, the landowner that complained and let him know. And this is a formal notification anyway, that it is in the process of enforcement right now with our town health officer. And additionally, the health officer reports that we await the state's response on the Cortina in alarm code violations observed at our last inspection. So they're waiting on the state. And there is an invoice, which I guess we've got to, I've got to have this printed up, Bill and and sent to, for payment. There's an invoice to replace the push bar on, on his vehicle damaged in an accident while responding to a call.
What other one?
Yellow button.
Thank you, sir. I guess I'm dying of heat in this corner. Thank you.
This was admitted, admitted by the, by the other vehicle owner. So that'll probably be on their insurance. Unless other, unless directed otherwise, I will reimburse for this from my budget. The expected remaining damage can be fixed for less than 500. That's the report of the health officer and
So I have no objection. He appears to have it in his budget. So
Okay.
Is, so he said, he said the other person's insurance company would be paying for
Well, she admitted, she, she admitted fault. So I don't know how that's going to go. And I don't really think he does either. Tell you the truth.
We're talking about $393.73.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those. We'd be better off not to file a claim and
Yeah.
You know, but otherwise I don't think they would subjugate it anyway for that amount. Probably not. Okay. And that, that completes my report as JP. So you got that? And let's go to Bill Sweet, our administrative assistant. Evening, Bill.
Not, not much left to do. It's good. Few things in the packet to review. We have our annual contract with Brookfield Service and the original Dawn is in the folder there. This is for servicing our, all of our generator units. And there's a list there too. There's all five of them. They do the school twice, all the other ones once. And we typically do, we, it's, it says program one and two, but it's one contract. So it's about 30 three, $3,400 and that comes out of the emergency management budget. So
Move, we approve the program one and two for the servicing by Brookfield of our generators.
Second. And did I sign?
Yes, and that Don signed on behalf of the board.
Any discussion on the motion?
I think we moved to annually. So we wouldn't forget as we did one year. Yeah. So this is good.
Joe, you okay with that?
Yep.
Hi.
Hi.
Any all those in favor? Wow, you know, I was waiting. I, I know you were mixing drinks there in the bar, but that's all right. Any opposed? Hearing none, I'll sign. Okay.
Also in the folder is a certificate of compliance for town road and bridge standards. Thank you. We do that. We have to do that annually and we're actually a couple of weeks behind. They sent it to us. We're missing. So it's we do meet the standards. We do have an up to date highway network. I just need, that's one for everybody to sign though.
Yep. So what's your pleasure, Board?
Oh, good times.
Fill in the blanks. I move we, I think we each have to
Yes, we, there's signature lines for all
So let's see, it would be, we, we do meet or exceed minimum requirements and we do have an up to date highway network inventory, right, Bill?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Motion?
I did.
Second.
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 Discussion? All those in favor sitting in the paper saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
On your desks, there were a few things we've gone through several already. We got a reply back from the state, state of operations, the safety bureau on our request to review the speed limits on Route 7. So there's a letter there from them on their follow up.
This is which one?
It's the letter from V-Trans for the Route 7 speed limits. I guess they're basically, Mary and
I guess they're uh basically, Mary and I talked about this, we're punt, they're punting on this.
Well, essentially, you'll remember that we met with the city inter municipal committee. And we agreed we should approach the state and ask them to reduce the speed limit. On the south end of town uh to thirty-five. Um, and on the north end of town also to thirty-five as the two approaches to the city on Route Seven. Um, the, a quick and dirty reading of this says that the state, when V-Trans went and did a traffic study. And decided that since most people were traveling within. Five miles of the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which means they were pretty close to forty miles per hour. They were, you know, uh, at about forty-two on the south end and about forty-eight miles on the north end. The, the state is recommending that that's close enough and we don't need to re, reduce the speed limit. What isn't factored in here, all they did was just kind of monitor and said, yeah, it's pretty good. What they didn't take into consideration were the um number of um casualties we've had there. On, especially on the south end and some of the other activities that are, are going on. And they, you know, they did a purely engineering review without considering why. We wanted to reduce the speed limits in these two areas. So I think we should talk with the city, find out if. They're going to have folks um appearing at this traffic committee meeting uh June eighth at one PM. And see if we can join forces with them virtually or in person.
Right, and the, the key to this thing is that middle paragraph where it says, while not part of the traffic committee process. There's an upcoming project that will be adding signalized pedestrian crossings of US seven at the intersection of Cold River Road. And a scoping study underway for pedestrian facilities on the northerly portion of the study area near Post Road. V-Trans will work with the city.
Yeah.
Uh, 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 I'm, I'm still looking for that, but I can't, I can't seem to find the town in there anywhere. Uh, to evaluate traffic signal timings on this cross jurisdictional coordinated traffic signal corridor. Wow, there, there is a mouthful.
That is quite the calamity words.
Salad that we need to investigate. Cross jurisdictional, but I did not see the other part of the jurisdictional mentioned anywhere in the sentence.
Just point out, this was written by an engineer and not by a lawyer.
Not that, so.
Here we go with the engineers again.
Anyways.
For that.
We're going to check with the city uh to see if they would like to uh. If they would like us to join with them on Wednesday, June eighth and also check with the state. As to whether we can uh do this uh virtually, so that, so that Mary and I don't have to go to Barry.
Um, I will say, the fact that they mentioned the pedestrian crossing at Cold River Road is a positive. Because we have wanted them to put that in, so folks from Adele Stanley, using the high, the sidewalk we built. Can cross over to Aldis. So this is, I'm glad that's in the works.
Well, it's, it's the least that we can expect anyway. I mean, obviously that would help with the situation. Because it refers indirectly to. The fatalities.
The need to have a slower speed so pedestrians can walk across.
Right, right, so that's the way we'll proceed with that, uh unless I hear objection from the board. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, right, uh, so that's it for the items from the packet and the, that from the desk. Uh, we also have uh an email up there from Andres. Uh, and then the information behind it uh talks about the illicit discharge and detection elimination project. Uh, this is part of our projects he identified that we need to do. Uh, there is a, uh, in the email, the cover there, it talks about the total cost of twenty-two thousand five hundred. Uh, we have about nine thousand left in the budget for this current fiscal year. With nothing really planned for the next couple of weeks and he says they would be able to split an invoice for us. So we can take the remaining and then use them next year. So if we can, if we can approve it, he can help us get it.
How much did we put in the budget for next year?
Um, I don't remember. I'm not sure exactly, but.
It was up there because we knew.
Yeah, well, we took, we took highways over there too, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it should be an appropriately sized number. Uh, there was, he had a big list of projects and I think we funded close to most of them. Uh, but this will allow us to, to soften the blow on next year too, so.
Alright, I move we approve.
Motion to approve what the, just the fee of twenty-two five?
Twenty-two thousand five hundred, split over two fiscal years.
Yep.
Uh, for the illicit, God, that just sounds so bad. Discharge study, which appears to be required by our MS four permit.
I don't think you say illegal discharge.
Listen, it sounds even worse.
Yeah, that's very word salad. Let me have a motion and a second. Do any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
And hearing no opposition, we have approved it. That's all.
Uh, just two other things and I'm all set. Uh, we are closed Monday for Memorial Day, so the whole office is closed on Monday. And uh, the last thing is um. We, we issued a uh, a violation of our informational building permit ordinance. We, there's been a, so that was sent out uh last week. We have not heard back yet. Um, but this is based upon. Um, an owner, property owner that we have repeatedly sent permits to, to say, here's the permit you need to fill out and they have yet to do it. So at this point, it's up to five different structures on their property, so um. Yep, so we sent it, we sent out the first, first notice of violation and uh it's only been a few days. We haven't heard anything back on it yet, but that's, that's out there.
This is a property owner that has refused to grant the listers permission to inspect any of the buildings. And there's four.
Yeah.
Four that we have identified, five that we, five that we know of, but we, well, we really don't. Because one of them is up in the woods someplace.
There's definitely gonna be more, but.
But we have an ordinance and the, it's specified what the, what the fines are for second, third, fourth offense. And further offenses, it's two hundred for the first and three hundred for the second, four hundred for the. Third and five hundred for the fourth and five hundred for each subsequent one, so. If you add two, three, four and five together, you'll get the fine amount that we. And we decided that if we have ordinances and they have enforcement authority and penalties in there, that we better, we better start sticking to that.
Right.
Otherwise, we set a pretty dangerous precedent that we're not, we don't have any teeth in these things, but. There was also. And I, and I'm concerned and I think the board, I really think the board ought to discuss this. It isn't just my opinion, but the, the uh. Uh, the road crew was up there after the uh, after the deluge that we got. Uh, to clean out a culvert that goes across the road. And empties into Tenny, what, what is one branch of Tenny Brook. Uh, from siltation and it was pretty much loaded up. They had to use the jet to get it free. Uh, and it was because of uh, a lot of impervious disruption of property. In this, on this particular site that we're talking about. And the property owner has accumulated a hundred and sixty-four acres of property. And is building without permits. And uh, I, I've. I don't think I'm in error when I say that this is a violation of Act two fifty. And that it should be brought to the district commission's attention for investigation.
I have no idea where you're talking about.
It's a pocket property. We've dealt with this before. But it's, there's well.
It's located where it's done.
Located on Post Road.
That's what I thought.
On the, on the, on the, uh, on the north. East side of the corner.
The curve, okay.
Yep.
And uh, I mean, there's a hundred and sixty-four acres and there's just, there's rampant, there's rampant development of this property. There's rampant disruption of, of soils. Uh, there's obviously uh blocking of culverts. And, and so forth. I mean, I, I think it's a serious. It's a serious situation. Um, and again, if we, if we don't deal with it in the proper legal manner. Then I think we're setting a dangerous precedent for. Any other potential property of that size or greater in the town where somebody just wants to feel that they can go in and do whatever they want.
One of the problems is we have no zoning.
But we have Act two fifty.
Well, we have Act two fifty as it will apply. And depending upon what type of, I mean, we can, we can try and report it to Act two fifty and see if they take any enforcement. But that's about as much as we can do.
Well, I think we should do as much, as much as we can do.
Okay.
And, and, and I, I agree.
There really is runoff and it's reaching waters of the stream, then water resources could be involved.
That's correct.
That's another, that's another potential.
And I agree with you about the zoning, however. We, we are tasking a very, very capable uh planning commission. With doing some ordinances that might be able to deal with these kinds of specific things as opposed to trying to make uh a whole. Seventy-page zoning doc.
Well, first of all, zoning documents don't have to be seventy pages. And secondly, what we're asking the planning commission to do is piecemeal a bunch of ordinances already on the books. Instead of taking a comprehensive look at how we, you know, plan development within the town, how we control development. So we have a difference of opinion on this. I happen to have worked with zoning ordinances in quite a number of towns and I'm not afraid of them.
No, and quite frankly, Mary, I'm not afraid of them either. Uh, I sat on this board when we came about that close to completing one. And presenting it to the people with our approval. For some strange reason, and I don't really know exactly.
I do.
Is, and you probably do.
You know what happened?
It didn't get the last like four pages of the document reviewed by us, which we had gone fastidiously through. I don't know how many pages it was, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, anyway. We were down to the last three or four pages and I think that document still exists in one of my files someplace. And all we have to do is do the last four and present it and we'd be done, so maybe we should do that.
If the select board doesn't act on a zoning documents within a year. And that's what happened. The select board did not act on it within a year.
Right.
It goes poof and you have to start all over again and the planning commission have pretty much had it by that.
Right, right, however.
That was about fifteen.
All over again. However, starting all over again may simply consist of taking the previous document, which was four pages short of completion. And completing it. Uh, I don't think we have to recreate the wheel on the first whatever number of pages, but anyway. Uh, what do you think about the letter? I mean, I can, I can simply send a letter of request to the district commission. Saying it, it has come to our attention that and we would um strongly suggest that this be investigated. This is very, this is dangerous. I mean, this is, this is really dangerous.
Well, we can do the district commission. I suggest we do water resources as well, because if it is.
They've, they've been involved in that property already.
Yeah.
And what are they saying?
The issue that we brought to them before, they said didn't rise to level of violation. It wasn't far, but it didn't rise to level of violation.
I think we went over it when Walt had to go up there with the jet and then.
Well, this, this was contained well within the bounds of property. The initial, initial issue was it contained well within the bounds of property and it, yeah, it just wasn't, it didn't. There was a concern and they investigated, they said it's, 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 it was, it was okay, so.
Yeah.
That was them.
Yes.
This is similar to the situation that we went through last year with.
Yes.
In Sand Hill.
There, there's no guarantee that they will respond because they're strapped with.
Yeah.
Personnel problems, but at least we can get our record, our.
Yep.
Letter in.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, that's everything I have.
Good, Bill. Thank you, Bill.
Oh, we see, we received a letter from the town.
Oh, yes.
That's all. Goes in our list.
Where is that one?
Dispatch center.
Oh, yeah, that, that was the additional one, yeah, nice. I didn't see that one. It wasn't in my list. I don't think we have any more, any more committee meeting updates. Um, Sharon and I are in the process of. Of coming up with a, with a uh, a date within the next couple of weeks that we're going to be meeting as a personnel committee and. And going over the personnel policies and. I've asked Bill and I've asked Carrie to uh. To do markups on theirs with just suggestions that they may have. We'd like to get input from staff. We'll ask the listeners as well. Um. And the police department. And then we can uh. We can have at it, but we need to, we need, we need to update the uh agreement that we uh. Is there any old business? To come before the meeting?
Uh, I have a question. We had on our desk at our last select board meeting some bids. For the shared use path and I don't think we took any action on them.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Cause we don't have any money.
Well, that's okay, but we should let the people who put in bids know when we are the other.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we reject these two bids. Um, one was Jack Bowen. I can't remember. The other one off the top of my head.
Um, yeah, I'll second the motion.
We reject them and um get back to these people to tell them that we've rejected the bids because of lack of funding and.
I agree.
Motion made and seconded that we send a courteous letter of rejection to the bidders. On the uh shared use path project uh due to lack of funding at this time. Do any uh discussion on that motion?
These were way higher than we thought.
Yes, they were.
Yeah, it was what, a hundred and. Hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Five and the other one was.
Change.
Yeah.
It was over two hundred thousand.
Everybody else's.
Yeah.
Jobs not being there and businesses shutting down.
A lot higher than I expected that to be for sure.
I will uh. Any, any discussion on that, Joe? Hearing none? Uh, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll send that letter out. I will continue to work with the, a volunteer who has come forward and try to get him together with the. With Mike Rowe. Uh, to check on the possibility of them combining efforts and uh we might, we may very well be able to get. This done over a period of two years with volunteer help. One of whom volunteer is the person who is actually working for pay. On the other trails in the park on bid and he's good. He's, he's very, very talented from Killington, uh, but he volunteers as well. Okay, we have that. We've taken care of E-nine-one-one. Or discuss the Route Seven North Sidewalk Project Grant Opportunity. Where's that, what? Couldn't do that.
Were we?
Huh?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, put that on the agenda from the last meeting. If we want to apply for it, to get to apply for it the day after the next meeting.
Right, so we have to authorize, Bill, so this is the one that we were gonna authorize you.
This is JP's side one.
We'll have the final report. We are, we are.
That's right.
We are intended to have the final report on June seventh. And then we would need to, we have till like literally Wednesday at one o'clock to apply for the grant for construction.
And I think we were trying to decide whether we wait till our next meeting to authorize this.
For this one.
How much lead time do you need to put together a grant?
The, the application templates are, it's, it's not, it's like four pages. It's not long, but it's just, yeah, we just. The, the application template is there. It's, it's not, it's like four pages. It's not long, but it's just, yeah, we just want to have.
We need to get, we need to get.
Yeah, cause it was.
We need to get the final report so we'll know what we're applying for.
Right, yeah, which, which we'll have at the next meeting, which we should.
Okay.
So you can put it together and then fill in the blanks.
For next meeting.
So I guess, I guess we've discussed it. And, uh,
Discuss.
A board to discuss the corona, Cortina in usage and Act two fifty, the, uh, uh, I'm under the assumption, since I didn't hear otherwise from our town attorney, that, uh, there wasn't any, there wasn't any request put in by the owner, uh, for, for a change of use. So that triggered his letter to the district commission, which has been sent today. So, and, uh, uh, I will have him, I will have him send a copy of that, uh, on, on our, our email.
Yes, please.
Is that, would you like that?
I'd like to see.
Is it, well, no, I'm, I'm asking, Mary, is, is it appropriate to put it on the email? Because it, that's, is that secure?
Well, he's, he's sent us stuff as secure, but he usually starts it with a heading that it is, you know, legal.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll have him do that. Uh, so, so that triggers it and, uh, Aneel has been, Satchif has been notified as of today that, uh, we have, we have requested a, uh, yes, I'm, my mind is just going blank. W- we've requested a, uh, determination of jurisdictional opinion on, uh, uh, his requirement to, uh, to get an amended permit, Act two fifty permit. He's in violation of his Act two fifty permit right now. Okay, board to discuss transportation advisory council appointment. And, um, this position is still open and Chris Howland had approached me and said that he would be willing to serve if the board so chose. Um, he's a registered engineer. He's had a whole career in engineering with the CV. Uh,
Is Jim Hall our alternate to this?
Jim Hall is our alternate and would continue as our alternate, but I think we need a member and well, if, if, uh,
I.
Yeah, it's, it's up to the board.
I think we were kind of holding it to see what happened with road commissioner, but that's just my recollection. Um.
Yeah, if, if I recall, I said I would do it on a, uh, interim basis until we decided what we were going to do. And there's actually a meeting Thursday, the twenty-sixth. It's a virtual meeting and, um, I did not attend the April one because I missed the notification. But if Chris wants to do it, we can let him do it. And then we can always talk with our hire, whoever we hire for the road commissioner's job, if they want to be involved or we can leave Chris there.
So why don't we put Chris in as an, um, interim, um, tack?
Yeah, and then talk to a road commissioner if we hire one.
Yeah, so I would so move this as an interim.
Okay, motion made to appoint Chris as the interim transportation council, uh, member, seconded. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous and I will call Chris.
You, uh, Don, that, that meeting is Thursday, the twen- the meeting is Thursday, the twenty-sixth. And like I said, it's a virtual meeting. So, um, in, in it, they said, I, I got an email to my town email. So if he needs that information, we can get it to him if he wants to attend that meeting on Thursday.
Go ahead.
He's on there. Chris Holland's on there.
Yeah.
Chris, are you on?
Yes, I am. I, I heard that. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, do you have Joe's number so you can get ahold of him?
Well, that's the same that's listed for the fire warden in the back of the town report.
There you go.
Yeah, that, yeah, we'll, I'll hook up with you and I'll, I'll, I can share that information with you, Chris.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris, and thanks for stepping up to that and congratulations.
I have one other comment about your meeting today.
Certainly.
Yeah, you have a all-inclusion po- policy and two of your members made derogatory comments about engineers at, uh, seven thirty-four.
My apologies, Chris. Feel free to make a derogatory comment about lawyers. Oh, wait, you have.
Well, all right. I got, you got a lot of ketchup, Mary. Thank you.
You were tongue in cheek on that one, Mary, but only slightly red.
Well, lawyers, lawyers, yeah, lawyers get hammered all the time.
That's all right. That's a, I think you would probably be.
Best jokes, really.
You, you would probably be upset if somebody did.
Again, I won't hurt your feelings if I tell you what my husband refers to lawyers as. When John Paul moved next door, he says, you know, we got a liar next door.
My dad, being the old Yankee, always used to say liar. So I said, Dad, just call me an attorney, please.
Yep.
If somebody tells JP that, I'll be over with his gun.
Uh, an executive session would be appropriate, I think.
Okay.
And a break first.
Yeah. Can we do one other item of new business?
Certainly can.
And this is a request, um, for the water sewer committee when we met probably six months ago now. Um, we have been talking with our engineer, Robert Clark, about doing.
An engineer.
Two, yeah, it's an engineer, an engineer, Chris, um, about doing two, um, projects in town and using a forgivable loan from the state to do each of them. One is a townwide study of our water systems. This would be the basis for figuring out what we need into the future and possibly going for other grants. Um, and the second is a engineering, um, proposal for businesses in town which are fa- which have more coverage than three acres of impervials, uh, impervious surfaces. They are going to need to do stormwater mitigation. We thought if we applied for a loan, forgivable loan to do the engineering, um, that would be a real, um, uh, head start for them. We could cover that as the town and then they could just do the actual construction. So I guess I'd like to know where those two things are. Robert was, um, talking with the state about each of them. I don't think they had firmed up, um, some of their requirements, but I'd be curious to know if he could reconnect with us and tell us if we should pursue either one of these. Um, I mean, a forgivable loan is just that. If we could help our businesses, um, let's do it if we possibly can. Yeah.
Yes, and I think we discussed that and, and it was unanimous that we would support
Yeah.
our businesses. So, um,
Can we, can we ask Robert to come to our next meeting and give us an update as to where that project or that, uh, stuff is?
That's what I'd like. Yes, thanks.
Yeah, that's, that's the best.
Everyone in agreement? Then, Bill, would you call him and schedule that if you can? Uh, and we'll put him at the head of the meeting.
Yep.
So that he doesn't have to hang around. Um, I think we need a, a brief recess and then, uh, we'll go into executive. Well, if, if there's a motion, we'll go into executive session.
Go into executive session. To discussion, um.
Personnel matter.
Personnel.
Okay, second.
Motion's made and seconded to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Uh, any discussion on a motion? Hearing none?
Before and after the break.
Pardon me?
Are you going to do that before or after a five-minute break?
Well, nobody will know because it's executive session and we don't take notes.
Executive break.
Bill's going to turn the computer off. Everybody will be out of the, uh, waiting room and. I, I didn't hear that.
It was just a personnel matter. Is that okay, Joe?
I'm good. I'm just waiting for somebody to vote to go into executive session.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're in a brief recess and we'll come back to executive session.
Ed will have his answer for that police department issue, Don.
Pardon me?
I can have Ed come back in so that he will have the answer.
That's right. Would you ask him to come in?
Yeah.
I will ask him to come in.
We're on open session, Bill, now.
Okay.
Okay, we have exited, uh, executive session at, uh, eight thirty-two. And we are waiting for our police chief to join us.
Okay.
Okay, we are now in open session.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, make a motion that.
Okay, Joe, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I'd like to move that we allow for the transfer of accumulated sick days within a department. Um, on, uh, any department, any town.
There's a motion and a second by Mary to allow transfer of accumulated sick days, uh, within a department. Is there any discussion on the motion? Joe, you made the motion. Any discussion?
Nope, I'm good.
Hearing none, hearing none, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, it's a vote and as of this point, the, uh, and the personnel policy will be changed to reflect that within a department, uh, there may be transfers of accumulated sick days. Very good. Any, uh, further business to come before this meeting?
Move your turn.
Motion is made and seconded. There's no discussion and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a good evening. Thank you very much.